So many, we have three agenda items. First one I'll turn over to, I guess, Jason for some of the introductions. Or were you on?
Yes, sir, that's fine. Mr. Mayor, Council. Was asked the other day to explore the process of renaming a state roadway within the city limits. And so, Mr. Williams worked with TechDoc and has found that process. And so it requires a resolution from the council. And if adopted, we will send that forward. And so you guys have the resolution in front of you, and I'll just kind of let you take it from there.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to do something to talk about it here, Justin?
Yeah, well, Mayor, I would just, I think, to recognize someone who has meant a lot to this community and given, you talk about a servant's heart, the things that he's put forward to make Stevieville and this community a better place. I can't think of a more deserving person than to rename FM 988 after Senator Robert J. Glasgow.
Thank you. So I have a motion right here, second?
Second.
I say unanimously. All right, any further discussion? I have a resolution I'll read after we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Let me read the resolution. It's going to be Resolution 2023 R-08. Whereas Robert J. Bob Glasgow was born and raised in Stevieville, Texas, and whereas in 1960 to 63, he served in the United States Army, and whereas in 1967, Robert J. Glasgow earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Charleston State College, where he was elected as class president and student body president, and whereas in 1970, he received a JD Law Degree from the University of Texas at Austin. Whereas after graduation, Robert J. Glasgow opened his own law firm in Stevieville, Texas, and served as the administrative assistant to Texas Governor Preston Smith. And whereas in 1972, he was the District Attorney for the 25th Judicial District, who has served E-Rath, Hood, Palapens, counties for eight years. And whereas Glasgow was elected as one of the 31 members of the Texas Senate, serving the 22nd District of Texas from 1981 to 1993. And whereas a senator, he chaired multiple committees, including the Rules Committee, Jurisprudence Committee, State Affairs Committee, and served as President Pro Tem of the Senate during his time, period making an impressive political impact on Texas history. And whereas Robert J. Glasgow has achieved the highest rating for his legal abilities in Martindale-Hubble, this ranking means that fellow, his fellow attorneys and judges have given Bob the highest ranking for his professional excellence. And whereas the naming of Farm Road 988 as Senator Robert J. Glasgow Loop will help serve to perpetuate the memory of Senator Robert J. Glasgow for his time-honored legacy of dedication, vision, and service to the state of Texas and the city of Stevieville. Therefore, now I be resolved that the City Council of the city of Stevieville, Texas, that the city of Stevieville hereby supports the renaming of Farm Road 988 North West Loop to Senator Robert J. Glasgow Loop. Street placards shall be replaced with an adopted name, and notice will be given to the property owners along such streets of the official change. It is hereby found and determined that the meaning of this, which, at this meeting, which this resolution was adopted, was open to the public as required by law, and notice of place, time, and purpose as said, meeting was given required by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, that this resolution shall take immediate effect upon its adoption, passed and approved this 20th day of June 1923. That would have been really bad. June 2023. And I just want to say that Bob's been a friend for a long time, and he's been great for the city of Stevieville.
Amen.
And it's an honor for us to rename that city for him, that street for him. So thank you, Bob. I know you're watching right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item, approval and assessment resolution for steering committee of the city's serves Atmos Energy. Is that going to be Mark, or is that you?
I got it. Mayor, Council, as you know, we are a member of two different committees, both run by the same company. One is the Atmos Steering Committee, the other is the Encore Steering Committee. And so what these groups do is, whether it's rate cases or other cases where Encore or Atmos file with the Public Utilities Commission, so that the city doesn't have to stand alone. This organization helps fight those cases and lower the rates that ultimately gets charged to our citizens. And so each year, we have to adopt a resolution to remain a member of these organizations. I would submit that it's certainly valuable for us to be a part of them. And on one of them, the annual invoice is $1,084, the other one's $2,168. One's, I think, five cents per capita, the other's 10 cents per capita. So my recommendation would be to adopt both of them.
Questions, questions or discussion? Right here, a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the assessment resolution for the steering committee of city served by Atmos as presented.
Second. Motion and a second? You hear the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve an assessment resolution for the steering committee of city served by Encore as presented.
Second.
A motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That will end, it's 5:36, and we're going to enter our special council meeting, and now convening to city council meetings. And with that, I'll turn it over first to Matty, to our nominations committee.
Mayor, Council, as you know, we've had a lot of changes in our advisory boards and committees this past year, so we have quite a few spots to fill, along with the reinstating of the Western Heritage Board, which is five spots to fill. The first spot I'd like to talk about is the Airport Advisory Board, and I'd like to recommend to the council to consider Ricky Thurman to fill Place Two on the Airport Advisory Board.
You have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider Ricky Thurman for the Place Two on the Airport Advisory Board.
Second. Motion is second. You want to call for the vote?
You're welcome to, because this is your count committee.
Just say we have a motion, now we have a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have one spot open on the Board of Adjustments. At this current time, the applicant is not able to be here, so I've asked that we move this to our July 11th, or July 20th committee meeting.
Okay.
And we have a spot on the Library Advisory Board as well. And after having a conversation with Jason this afternoon, we wish to postpone this nomination as well. And then another position we have available is for SITA. And I'd like to give Ms., our applicant is Gerald Cook, and we have, we have to interview the law, or the handbook says we need to interview Mr. Cook for this position, so.
He can get up and speak, or you can ask him questions, whatever.
Thank you, Gerald.
All right, shoot.
Who are you?
Would you like to give us a quick insight on why you'd like to sit on the SITA board?
I'd be glad to. First, I guess, my name is Gerald Cook, and 316 Tanglewood Circle. And I have served on the SITA board before, and have been, passed Chair of SITA. My background in, has all been in economic development, starting here in Stevieville, and then in Abilene, where I was the head of the Industrial Foundation in Abilene. And then I went to Kansas, and was in Salina, and I headed up the Chamber and Economic Development Corporation there. And then from there, I went to Kentucky and headed up the Hopkins County Development Corporation. And we ran some industrial parks and did the typical economic development type things, although our emphasis was more on manufacturing and industrial development than it was on commercial. The, coming back here after I retired, I am not one to sit at home or go fishing, and I'm not much of a golf player. I wish I was, but anyway, I'm not. I, but both Reed and I like to volunteer, and we like to try to share any expertise that we might have. SITA was the logical thing for me when we first got here. And so I applied at that time and was put on the SITA board. And I just asked that the council, I think I've got some knowledge base that I can bring to the SITA, and hopefully bring, hopefully working with the other board members and the staff, I will do my best to try to make it a even better organization than it is now, for the benefit of this community.
For those who don't know, I mean, I'm not sure everybody doesn't know, but if you don't, FMC wouldn't be in Stevieville, Texas if it weren't for Gerald. And so he's from a long time ago, was big in development in Stevieville, Texas.
Does anybody else have any questions for Gerald? Gerald, thank you so much for serving our community the way you have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council.
I'd like to make the motion that the council approves Gerald Cook for Place Seven on the SITA board.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And then the Western Heritage Board, this is a new revitalized board, and it's needing to sit five board members. I would like the council to consider the following, to sit on the board. We have Debbie Doris, Carrie Hale, Marilyn Meter, and Mary Flatbush.
We can't, we can't take those as a, as a single motion, is it right?
We have to do a motion for each of them?
Or can we do them all, each one? Each one has to be different.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve Debbie Doris for the Western Heritage Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to make the motion that we approve Carrie Hale for the Western Heritage Advisory Board.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'd like to make the motion that Marilyn Meter be approved for the Western Heritage Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. I'd like to make the motion for Mary Flatbush to be on the Western Heritage Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Anything else in your committee?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Newby.
Yes, sir. Okay, first item is parking restrictions on West Long Street.
Chairman, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, and the Public Health and Safety Committee, I'm recommending tonight that we change the parking restrictions regarding West Long Street from Graham to Alexander, and that is located in the code of ordinances 75.02 Schedule II. To read as follows, it would be both sides of the roadway. Currently, it is the north side of the roadway, and it is both sides of the roadway in the 100 block, which is from Graham, just one block in there. So obviously, we're about to have a great roadway thoroughfare there, and our concern at the police department is that will potentially present a hazardous situation if we have part of that view blocked based on the side of that roadway there. And so, again, is my recommendation that we go from one side of no parking at all times to both sides of the roadway, parking at all times, from Graham to Alexander. I'd be happy to take any of your questions. Oh, let me add one more thing, I'm sorry, apologize. Physical impact, there is a small one, that is for the signs, I should have put that in there, the signs, and nix men and women to graciously install those, but that is minimal in that aspect.
So when would that take effect?
As soon as construction is completed. And we have a small part that has been completed now, which that would go ahead and, and obviously once, we're, we depend on what the committee does, and then to the full council. But would take place immediately after.
I didn't know if we had to wait a certain, if there was a timeframe, we had to let the people that affected neighborhood, the neighborhood know, or no, I didn't know.
Right, they're physically unable to park on the street.
Right.
And have been that way. And so we have talked to some, some are rentals, some, you know, we, we do spend a lot of, we have spent a lot of time on Long Street there, and so far, no issues there. It is one of the things that comes up a lot to me as the Chief of Police, is can you add that to both sides? Can, you know, all different types of streets in the city. We know we have grown, vehicles have become larger, and our streets, a lot of our streets are small, and it's, it's a challenging safety issue, especially when it comes to kids in the street and different types of things like that. But, but we don't foresee any, any issues going forward.
Mr. Chair, I know this time I'm not on your committee, but do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
What's the, what's the percentage of owner-occupied properties on that stretch of the road?
I can get you that for you, but I don't know. There are, it's a mix. You do have quite a few that are college rentals there. And what we do see on the south side, which is this will impact, is you do see more of the ability to park on their property, whether that be a turnabout or a direct driveway in that sense. You do have more than a lot of streets do. When I take a look at that, and when people complain to me about those kind of things, it's one of the things I look like, what, what does their prop, how's it set up? What's their driveway look like? Do they have a semicircle driveway plus a straight driveway? What do they have? But I can get that for you, I don't have that for you.
I know a lot of those yards are pretty large over there, too, so.
And again, on the south side, which is this is adding to that, there are quite a few that are college rentals.
Yes, Chief.
I'm sorry, I get that for you.
Mr. Baskett, I asked the chief and Nick to look at this. That road functions as an arterial roadway.
Oh, for sure.
It's what it's meant to be. Unfortunately, we were unable to widen it with this project, and so we've all complained about it for years and years and years, of what happens with traffic down Long Street, and with the growth, and some of the transitioning. I just thought with the total reconstruction, this would be a dandy time to.
I think it's a great idea.
Take, take a look at getting that fixed for the future, for once the roadway does open up, that it's a little cleaner and safer to operate.
Do you mind? So Chief, we're going to have a tabletop smooth road surface, no bumps, no dips? We're taking everything off of the, all the obstructions off the road surface, how are y'all going to handle that?
So the new traffic unit will, so one of the things we are doing is, send them to some training with TechDoc, to where we look at our hotspot areas and how we deploy and what times we deploy. Obviously, this roadway has been out of commission for some time, so we will study that also when it comes like, what are our, what are peak times, or what times do we need to be working that particular roadway? It's been concerning, in my tenure here, just over three years, we've used a speed trailer once already on Long Street, and, and, based on complaints of people driving through there. And so, one, this does increase that visibility, and there is a potential for some of those speeds to go up, but we'll be there to help slow them down. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I did also ask for.
I would just feed through there with all those bumps.
Well, yes, sir.
No entering vehicle.
I did also ask for one other traffic control device to be added into this project. Chief or Mr. Williams, either one can go ahead and tell you what those are.
Mr. Williams, you hold the street.
Sure.
I just.
We receive a third quote today for radar signs to be permanently installed.
Well, as a resident of East Long, me and my neighbors have complained among ourselves about the speed.
Yes, sir.
By the time they left Alexander Road and gotten to Divine, they looked like Shazam going by.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we need a motion?
Yep, you make the motion, Chair.
Okay, I move that we change the current parking restrictions regarding West Long Street, located in code of ordinances 75.02 Schedule II to read. No parking zones are established on the city streets or follows Long Street West, both sides from its intersection with Graham to its intersection with West Alexander at all times.
Second.
It's been moved. Second, is all of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, number three, is the automatic aid agreement with the E-Rath County Volunteer Fire Rescue Department.
Thank you, Chairman Newby. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to present to y'all a recommendation to enter an automatic aid agreement with the E-Rath County Fire Department. At the current time, we are working under a mutual aid agreement with the E-Rath County Fire Department. That agreement means if we need their assistance in large-scale incidents, our responding crews at that time have to notify our dispatch, ask them to notify the county dispatch to tell them to bring, you know, a certain amount of equipment and personnel, kind of slows it down. Kind of slows things down. With an automatic aid agreement set up by protocol and an agreement with the county, that would be automatic. So we or they receive a call for a large-scale incident, then the dispatch will automatically dispatch them in that combined dispatch center that we're moving to. So it just speeds things up a little bit better for us and them as well. Any questions?
Okay, well then, I will make a motion for the approval of an automatic aid agreement with E wrath County Volunteer Fire Rescue Department.
Second.
They've been moved and seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So it passes.
Thank you. The second recommendation I bring to you is for a donation of some fire department equipment, some radios and self-contained breathing apparatuses. As y'all remember, we entered into a new radio system with our police department. So the system that we have now is, is no longer useful for us. However, it is useful for E wrath County and the fire, the volunteer fire departments in the county. So I ask that not only that, but also our self-contained breathing apparatus systems be donated to the county. With those self-contained breathing apparatus systems, we fall under more regulations with the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. So we had to upgrade due to their regulations. But those systems can still be used by the county fire department and the county volunteer fire departments as well. Y'all have any questions over that?
I don't hear any questions, so I make a motion that we approve of donating fire department radios, self-contained breathing apparatus to E wrath County Fire Rescue, ECGRF.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Clinton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item on our agenda for tonight. It's a discussion of policy on water and sewer services outside the city. Mr. King or Mr. Williams, who wants it?
I, I'll take it. Members of the committee, mayor, council, if you'll remember, we had had a discussion back in the fall, I think it was around September. There was a gentleman wanting to develop a piece of property on the northwest side of town that was just outside of town and was wanting to connect water and sewer. It became kind of a heated discussion with the neighbors in the area. And so we had a discussion about how that decision's made. Currently, the way it's listed in policy and the fee schedule is it's a staff-level decision. That night, in the discussion, it was asked if it could be a council-level discussion or decision, and the answer is certainly yes. And, and it was requested that we revisit this at some point in time. We're starting to get more interest from a couple of different areas. Folks that are wanting to do stuff outside of town and, and connect. And so it reminded me that, that we did need to sit and have that discussion real quick about, do we leave this with staff or do we elevate it to a council-level decision? And so, we can kind of go, go from there.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Jason on this?
I want you to start.
Well, I've, I've got several. Okay. They may be the same ones you.
I just have one. My, my only concern, Chair, is that if they're contiguous with the city, that should we require them to be self-annexed to get services like that? We've had a couple, the first time I remember doing it's been ten, eleven years ago. And there was a lady that was out past city limits on the south side, I guess, of the highway. And she was not, she couldn't be self-annexed, she was like three or four lots down. And her well went bad and we agreed to sell her water. But that was, we couldn't annex her in because she wasn't contiguous. So that'd be my only concern was, should that be a consideration for us?
Valid point. I agree. I think this, this one is not contiguous, this particular case. But I've just got a couple of general questions, Jason. So in your time in your current position, do we have a wheelbarrow full of complaints about the way decisions, not only regarding this, but I know there, there are staff decisions made in building services and the finance department? We got a lot of complaints about the way those decisions are being made now? No, sir. So when someone comes in with an issue like this, how is that decision made? I mean, is it subjective? Is there a criteria for justification of, of the way the decision's made? How do, how do you go about doing it?
So especially if it's non-contiguous, we're gonna look at the, the length of pipe that's gonna need to be put in. And certainly, that's gonna be at the developer's cost. But our interest in it is on the backside of it, since we're gonna maintain it forever. And so, you know, if you're having to put in, say, you know, four or 500 feet of pipe to reach it to what you want to do, and then it's an RV park, it's never, and suddenly now, we're maintaining that line forever. You're not, even through rates and what you're gonna pay, we're always gonna be upside down on, on trying to maintain that pipe. And so we, we try to evaluate some of the objectiveness to, well, what's the project gonna be? And can it, can it kind of take care of the maintenance of the infrastructure that it's installing? And in, in a lot of the cases, the answer's no. And our current thought on that is, we're not gonna put ourselves more underwater on maintenance costs. I mean, this council and councils before it have, have made some hard decisions on rates and, and how we're gonna do them. And we've got a plan on how to fix old outdated infrastructure. We don't wanna, we don't want to contribute to that problem, you know, for groups down the road because we extended infrastructure way outside our boundaries that we have no hope of recovering the cost on. So that, that's kind of the, the first primary one. A second one would be, if your particular project's not something that if it were in the city limits, that we would allow, then we're going to evaluate it from that stance also and say, hey, just because you're outside of town and you can kind of do what you want because you're out of reach of our ordinances, doesn't mean we should give you some kind of tacit approval by extending our utilities out there as well. So those are kind of the two primary things that we look at is, is that cost factor on the back end and then looking at the project from our own ordinances and standards. And if it's not something that we would allow within the city limits, probably needs to weigh in on a decision on whether we serve it in another capacity outside.
Okay, and then my final one is, you touched on it real briefly there. So when, when these requests for these kinds of decisions come in, is it onerous on staff? I mean, does it consume a lot of time, taking them away from other duties and responsibilities, or is it pretty straightforward?
No, so far, the ones that are coming in are pretty straightforward. I mean, that's what we do. And I know of the couple that have, that have hit us recently, it's, it's not really a lot on our end. Because like, you know, Nick's gonna work with them real quick and say, okay, well, here's where the line stops. Here's where your property is, so that's however many feet. Here's what size you would need. And, you know, here's what your cost, cost would be on that. I mean, we look at it real quick from that cost factor and then look at the project. I don't, I think we've spent much time on either, either one of the two recent ones I can think of.
And then back to the mayor's point about the parcels that are contiguous, that are, that are touching the city. Is, is that part of the current policy or that, that if they are going to connect, they have to self-annex?
We have not adopted that as a formal policy, but on all the ones that have come up, that has been a serious part of the discussion. And really, the only ones that have, have come up recently are all on 281 North and they've all annexed. I'm fine if we want to adopt that as a formal policy, that if you're contiguous, that's just the way we want to handle it in order for that to be part of the conversation. Because that's where I'm gonna head, that's where I'm gonna head the conversation anyway. And so all of those businesses in that land that have come in, that was part of the conversation. At least one of them started out, they didn't want to. But as we got into the detailed discussion of that, they changed their mind and decided to become part of the, part of the city. So it's, it's six one way, half dozen other to me. It, it would probably be a little helpful if it was a formal policy. Because if you really want it, then come on in.
Would, would that be something that would come out of nominations committee or?
No, fine, making it out of public works and then adopting it at the council level.
Anybody else have questions for Jason on this one?
Jason, this, I think this particular discussion was related to a conversation we had about a multifamily going in adjacent to residential neighborhoods right on the border of, of the city. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So I think the, the main reason for one of my desires to discuss this further was the fact that we were getting questions unaware that these conversations were going on, that city council members. And so I think that an awareness approach, I think, is prudent. Not saying that we don't have competent staff, I think we do. But I think that making us aware of that and what impact that may or may not have. And we have a, we have a duty as it relates to zoning ordinances as city council members, right? So I think that makes a lot of sense from a city council perspective. But obviously, that'll, that'll be up to the council as a whole to determine what makes the most sense.
I think what we're talking about here, if we do had a formal piece about being contiguous, would have helped in that particular case if that, if that had been part of our formal policy, because that property was contiguous. So that would have required, if you had that policy adopted, it would have required a voluntary annexation, which then does come before council and have those public meetings. So that, that would be another reason maybe why that formal policy's a good idea. Because then it not only brings awareness to council members individually, but the community as a whole.
Well, and just kind of thinking through this, I mean, to, there is no annexation of property due to some changes in the legislature several years ago, at least from the city's perspective. We can't, there, there's a self-annexation process.
It's called, it's voluntary, it's still referred to as that voluntary annexation. And so they, what happens now is they make a request for you guys to bring them into the city limits. But it still is a council action, a government action to do it. You, and not everybody that may request that, you may not say yes.
Granted, right. Well, and I think that's my point, right?
Right.
So the, the other side of that would be then, is there a formal process to determine, at least within the ETJ, I mean, that, that would probably be the most likely of areas that get self-annexed potentially?
Well, no, it would have to be because even, even under voluntary, you do have to be contiguous. That is one of the requirements of the statute, so.
So is there, is there any kind of analysis of future land use inside the ETJ as well?
Not anymore.
Okay.
Because we, we quit.
Something to think about, I think.
Well, we quit enforcing our subdivision rules.
Inside the ETJ.
Inside the ETJ.
The subdivision rules, is that the same as zoning ordinances then?
Yes. Yes.
I believe that was one of the reasons why they didn't want to self-annex was because they wanted to go, didn't want to go by our rules.
Right.
On that particular case, but wanted the water and sewer. So that's what the, the big deal was with that one.
Which, like I was telling you earlier, which would have been one of our evaluating factors on it was, just like anything else, hey, if this was in the city, could you do it? And the answer to theirs would have been no. It would have taken P and Z and, and those kind of things. We just never got there on that one. But I, I think the, the form, you know, the formal, hey, if you're contiguous, you're gonna need, you really, you just need to self-annex.
He got you, Jason?
Yeah.
He answered all questions I asked. Anybody else have questions for Jason on this one?
So with the recommendation of that, as it, as it relates to a policy, can that be a motion that's made tonight?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, please as the committee, I'd like to make a motion to make, to make it where adjacent property to the city of Stevensville requesting use of city utilities then self-annex as part of the use of the city's utilities.
Would that be a recommendation to the council?
To the commi, uh, well, making the motion as a recommendation to the council, yes, sir.
Could I, could I ask, could we put, take that adjacent out and put the word contiguous?
Contiguous, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second before the, the committee that we recommend to council that a new policy be created that only contiguous properties can access water and sewer and they must a, ask for voluntary annexation to do so. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That will move to council with a positive recommendation then. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Public Works Committee meeting.
I just want to mention, Nick, you're, everything's looking good in Steeble. I appreciate carbon drive. We had to discuss that issue here for too long as well. And fire department, I appreciate y'all's working. It is, we've had two E wrath County ambulances go by and I've heard nothing but good stuff about how y'all organized, you know, as far as mutual aid, et cetera, working within the current structure. I really appreciate y'all doing that a lot. And it's been an honor, Bobby, to rename that street after you, that highway after you tonight. So thank you very much. With that said, it's 6:07 and we will stand adjourned with no other agenda items.